Check, check. I think it works.
Do not.
All right, it's 6:04 PM. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Please, I would like to leave this room inside.
The United States of America, into the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible,天地正正，
Before we get started, you will notice that council now has new audio system in there. So, thank you very much to the IT department for setting up council members when you are playing the speech. Don't ever keep your mics on at one time. We're also getting massive terrible voices going on the speakers. When you want to speak, hit the off button.
It'll turn red, and then, obviously, now you can hear my voice very well. Some people probably don't like that, but that's okay. But now you can all hear it in the room very easily. You know, it says two inches from your face, but obviously, it works a little bit farther, so. And then, when you're finished speaking, make sure to hit the off button as well. And all of this audio is able to be heard through Zoom, so our Zoom participants will be able to hear us better, and they will be able, we will be able to hear them better, because their audio will be coming through the speakers as well. So, just a couple of notes, and, you know, if a couple of things go wrong in this meeting till we get used to it, that's okay, but we'll figure it out. So, roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Kryshenowski?
Here.
Mr. Liskavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Present.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich? You have ten of eleven present.
All right, thank you. Mr. Schem, would you please announce the executive session?
Yes. This evening, before this session, we had an executive session where we discussed a litigation matter, and where council got to speak with and interview people that were appointed for...
All right, thank you. Are there any deletions from the voting session agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adopt the agenda?
So moved, second.
All right, motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted. We will now have public comment on agenda items only. We have one slip for, oh, I'm sorry, we have two slips. Greg Griffin? Mr. Griffin, when you go up to the microphone there, when you hit, there's a power button, you have to hold it in for a second, it'll turn green, and then... Oh, it's already on? Oh, great, thank you.
Members of council, citizens, Greg Griffin, Swarazil. Speaking on agenda item number six, the opioid committee, approximately $1.7 million a year for 25 years, the committee will be receiving to dispense. This is a tremendous responsibility on council members. It's taxpayers' money, and council will oversee the opioid committee. There'll be one council member on the committee of experts. The citizens expect this opioid committee to bring the death numbers down. You'll be getting $1.7 million a year from the opioid settlement to be successful. Almost 200 a year, 200 young people a year die, and have died in the past five years. 200 a year. That's equivalent to a jumbo jet a year crashing. Luzerne County is third out of 67 Pennsylvania counties. We're third. We're behind Philadelphia and Allegheny County for young people dying. This is ground zero. You could leave the courthouse and in 15 minutes buy fentanyl from a drug house. This is, this is what the opioid committee is going to have to address. This money must not be wasted. People's lives are counting on you, council, to oversee this opioid committee. Listen to the district attorney. He is on the front lines. He will be on the committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Griffin. Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yeah, I just want to talk about the opioid issue also. My fear is that we're going to waste this money. It's been proven fact that everything that we have done so far is we've always hired professionals, and usually, in my opinion, professionals don't know shit, because all they do is they get their academia, and they don't have street smarts. You guys don't ask the people that have the answers. It's a money grab. It's what grants are for, seems to be. I have been involved with many substance abuse centers, and I've went from one to one to one, and it's just such a waste of time, being an ex-addict myself, and being in a couple centers. I also think that the system's broke. I think that we put away drug addicts, and we're not hard enough on drug dealers. And I was actually a drug dealer once, and I'm saying that also. We have to get a new approach. Throwing money at the problem is not the answer. It's been failed over and over and over again, okay? We need to have people on this committee that are street people. We need people that are go, that have overcome, and I would like to be a part of this committee. I think with my experience, and my tenacity, and my honesty, which most people don't like, which I really don't care, because I want to solve a problem. I just don't want to pat somebody on the back and say we're acting like we're solving a problem. I want to solve it. It starts with the, it starts with the magistrates by increasing bail amounts, and I'm a bail bondsman, I'd rather do less bails. I would rather make less money in my pocket and solve this problem. So, I want you to take this seriously, not pick your friends, and not pick somebody, because somebody knows somebody that owns a facility, and give them the damn money. Please. Don't pick your friends. Don't pick your allies. Pick the people that can get a different answer than the one that's been happening over the last 40 years in this damn country. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Denise Williams?
Mine's not agenda.
Oh, okay, I apologize. Okay, anybody on the Zoom, or anybody else in the audience? Mr. Granteed?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mark, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Raybo, no, no, there's a couple of people in the room who still want to speak. Can you just hold on a second, Mr. Raybo?
Sure.
Thank you. Sorry about that. Go ahead, Mr. Granteed.
Yeah, about Joe Granteed in Plains. Item five, regarding ordinance of protection for election workers?
That's on the work session.
Okay, so that's not now? All right. Well, then, I'd just like to voice my support for Erin Harvey, and I would hope that she would come forward and tell her side of the story.
Mr. Granteed, that has nothing to do with the agenda items that we have.
I can't take it back.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anybody else in the room?
Try to stick to the agenda items, please.
Mr. Walsh?
Jamie Walsh from Ross Township, thank you for the time. As far as the opioid problem we have here, I lost a brother a year ago from an opioid overdose, bad dose of fentanyl. Started with prescription drugs 20 years ago after a knee surgery. Never did a drug in his life until he got addicted to painkillers. And it just escalated for 20 years, where finally, he died in his living room over on John Street in Edwardsville a year ago. It's something that I'm very passionate about, and if there's any way in any shape or form that I could be of help to the committee, I'd be more than happy, because pretty much everybody in this room has been affected by the opioid epidemic in one way or another. If you haven't lost a loved one, you know someone who has, and it's, it's, as Mr. Griffin stated, how, how bad it is here in Luzerne County. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Anybody else in the room? All right, Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mark Raybo from Hazelton. On the opioid committee, I would like to express my sentiments as well as far as the opioid committee goes. Hazelton is a, one of the source cities that was identified by the DEA several years ago, and it's been a source city ever since of opioids and fentanyl. So, I hope that the DA and the members of the opioid committee can do something about decreasing the supply of opioids on the streets in the form of narcotics distribution. On item number two, for the long-range transportation plan, I would like to ask if the county manager and the division, the head of the operations division, and also, planning and zoning director, Mr. Jones, have identified the, the roads, the roads that need to be extended because of the commercial development, particularly in Hazelton, Hanover Township, the ones that are receiving the LRTs because of the increased amount of commercial truck traffic. I hope that is put into the, incorporated into the long-range plan that you're going to vote on tonight. Also, with regards to the water, the PUC for the increase, rate increase, the proposed rate increase, I would like to make a suggestion to council and the county manager to send a letter to the Senate Environmental Committee, to the chairman, Senator Gene Yaw, the chairman of the Environmental Committee, and ask him to, ask the Chesapeake Commission for our money back that we sent down to Maryland for the rain tax. I think that that money should be utilized for the water distribution upgrades, instead of sending it to a foundation that is just splurging on administrative salaries, which is really doing nothing to clean up the bay. That's all I have to say, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Mr. Griffith? Walter? Okay, there you go.
There we go. Thank, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I want to thank the administration for the sound system. As we all know, including Mr. Granteed, has voiced our opinion about the sound system in the room not being adequate. This, this is just another example of how when the county gets together and works together as a group, we can get things accomplished, and that's, we've, we've been worrying about the sound system for years. It only took the county manager less than a year, being in office, to take care of that, and it really needed to be done. People in the audience could not hear well, and so, kudos to get the, the administration for having taken care of that. There's also on the agenda item number seven, or I'm sorry, item number, let me see which one it was, item number five, regarding the division head for operations services, for Ms. Pacora. Ms. Pacora's been in the county for quite some time, and has done fabulous work on the administrative services division. She got, she stepped into that position, and then had to work with the elections division in a critical time, and now she steps into the operations division at a critical time when we had to revamp that whole department. And she is like the Energizer Bunny, quite frankly. It's constant, constant work, trying to get these things squared away. I think she's a great choice. Qualifications-wise, she may not have the educational background for that, but she certainly has the institutional knowledge, which is, something is way more important than a piece of papers, in my opinion. I think if you're qualified for the job, and you've, you've seen that in action, it's, that's to the benefit of the taxpayer. So, I think she's a good choice for the county manager to make for that position, and I would strongly encourage council to support her, her ability to be the next operations division head. And the last item I have is the item number seven regarding the public utility commission. Mr. Hawes has brought a great resolution. The, we need to support that, so the people of this county realize that we are not in favor of constant utility increases that really hurt our residents of this county. And I think this sends a clear message to the PUC that the county council, who's our governing body, is in strict opposition to that rate increase. And I think it's a good step in a positive direction to get the PUC to understand that this rate increase is going to hurt a lot of people in our county. So, thank you for Mr. Hawes's forward thinking to get that on the agenda as well. And I think that's all I have for the agenda items. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Griffith. Robin Kay?
Yes. This really just pertains to item number...
Robin, I apologize. Can you just state your full name and your municipality you live in?
I'm sorry, it's Robin Kochan, Dallas Township.
What's your last name? Sorry?
Kochan, Kochan.
Can you spell it, please?
I can. It's K-O-C-H-A-N.
Okay, thank you. All right, go ahead.
So, this is just regarding agenda item seven, and I wanted to say we fully support adopting a resolution to urge the PA, PUC to deny the rate increase. And we also want to thank council in advance for showing some care and concern for the community during these inflationary and very difficult economic times. It's truly appreciated. And just as a final note, we also are in agreement with the other public comment about the other items with the opioid crisis and other things. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kochan. Anybody else for public comment? All right, hearing none, I will request a motion to approve the minutes of the January 23rd, 2024 voting session. Motion? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, minutes are approved. I'll next have a motion to adopt the resolution entering into a lease for a portion of land at the Luzerne County Annex for the use by the flower tent. Motion and a second. Roll call?
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshenowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous?
All right, thank you. Motion to adopt the resolution regarding the resolution authorizing an agreement with Lackawanna County to produce a long-range transportation plan, and authorizing a $170,000 total budget apportioned over three years to compensate a project consultant and the GIS department. Motion? Second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Ms. Kryshenowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Thank you. Number three, motion to adopt the resolution approving a modification to an American Rescue Plan Act funds awarded project for Ashley Burrow. Motion? Motion in a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
On the question?
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Just to clarify, I did, I did question earlier, a few days ago, if this was a request for an increase of money, and I was informed that it is not. It's a request to move money from one line item to another, but it's not an increase of the ARPA money. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Thornton. Go ahead.
It's not a change in the scope of the, of the job. It's just a, it's a change order to get the job done, unlike the last, we voted on the last two. They were different endeavors entirely.
I believe that's true, right?
This is a situation where there were two phases or two parts of the project. They're, they won't be able to use the money for the second part of the project, because it was, it came in above cost. So, they're using the money for the first phase and for as much as the second phase that they possibly can.
So essentially, it's, it's, so essentially, Ms. Croco, it's keeping the main thing the main thing, again, not, not streaming up some other
No.
tasks to be done.
No.
So, that's, I think it's very important to support it, okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, there's a motion in a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshenowski?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, number four, motion to adopt the resolution confirming the appointment of the chief public defender, and just for the public's posterity, it is Joseph Jaeger, and the salary is $105,000 a year. Is there a motion? Second. All right, roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
On the question, Ms. Chair?
Go ahead.
So, what was the, the budget amount for the public defender last year for the division head, for this, for this calendar year, 2024?
Ms. Croco, was it 90 something, 95?
I believe it was 105 that we budgeted for. It was in the budget for 105.
For this?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I thought I had that down here. Is that, what's the line item, if I, if you can indulge me? What division is that under, Mr. Chairman?
I don't know what the number is off the top of my head, but it's in the, the public defender has their own line.
Are you asking the salary for 2024 that was passed in the November budget of last year, or are you asking the year before that?
This current year. So, what did council budget for this 2024 year for that?
I don't know.
That's what I'm trying to find there. Just indulge me for one second. I thought I had it written down here.
Do you have the position list?
I do. That's what I'm looking through here.
I don't, I don't have, I don't have it with me.
Public defender, it's actually Division 80.
Last page.
This looks like, so it's 100, okay. So, it's 105, 194. Now, that's what was budgeted last year for this. Okay.
All right.
All right.
Any other?
Yep, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, roll call, Ms. Lawrence?
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Ms. Kryshenowski?
Yes.
Mr. Liskavage?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, number five, motion to adopt the resolution confirming the appointment of the division head of operational services. And for this one, it will be Jennifer Pacora at a salary of $110,000 per year. Motion in a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence. Go ahead.
On this issue, the council budgeted $98,800 for this position in the 2024 budget.
Ms. Croco?
It's an increase.
That's correct, and it is increased, and we do have the funds.
Yeah.
I cleared that with budget and finance.
And like, well, go ahead, go ahead, Jen.
May I?
Go ahead.
Where are the funds coming from?
It's from that division.
That same division?
If, if
Go ahead.
If I could, Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
You know, I want to support management. I want us to make sure we get the best person for the job, and obviously, Jen's been excellent for me since I've been here in this very short time again. However, the, the budget's the budget, and we need to live within our means. The council came and supported this for last year, and I'm sure spent many hours lamenting over this and, and making changes. And I just think it's so critical that, just like we ask all of their levels of government, that we should live within our means and follow the, the approved budget. It's just, I just...
Mr. Hawes, we're, you know, just to clarify, we aren't spending any more money anywhere within the budget. We're just allocating it from one place to another, probably where we spend. We're just allocating it from one place to another, probably where we spend, you know, less than what we needed.
No, and I get how budgeting works. It's because you take it from one point and give it to another. At the end of the day, though, it is, it is one budget, and that's why, I just think this sets a bad precedent, that we change the budget midstream, and we have other positions out there that have, have clearly demarcated salaries and costs, and I just don't think this sends a good message to the, the fellow staff and the public. Again, this has nothing to do personally with Ms. Pecora. It's just a matter of, of leadership, and I just think we need to, to follow through on that as council. And I know it's a very tough job, and I know it's a lot of work involved, but I'd like to entertain the motion to reduce that salary down to, if, if we, in fact, are in the 98, 800, it's, it's only a few thousand dollars, but again, it's the prince behind everything, to 101,250. What that would be, that would take the, the budget amount, 98,800, with the two and a half percent merit increase that was given, to 101,250.
Is that a motion?
You made that motion?
If I can make that motion, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Second that.
Motion, and there's a second?
On the question, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I, just, just so everybody understands in the room, county council does not hire this person. County council hires nobody in the county except for the county manager and the clerk of council. So the salary was previously negotiated with this individual by the county manager. If we go ahead and reduce the salary here tonight, it was not previously agreed upon by the parties involved. It's quite possible that person could decline the position. I'm not sure, but I'm just going to ask Attorney Skeen his legal opinion. Should, before we vote on this amendment, should we recess to executive session to discuss this, maybe with the parties involved?
Well, the executive session is just for council and county council and council to discuss matters, to be included in the meeting. I would agree with you that you guys chose county manager. County manager has been doing a great job, and she has asked that you confirm the appointment that she made. And she would have made the negotiation, as you stated, with the proposed division head. And to change it now effectively would be changing the deal that had been struck upon council passing on the-
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, Attorney Skeen. And again, I want to remind everybody, we're here to simply confirm what the county manager has already decided. I, I think we're going down a slippery slope if we begin to micromanage the county manager. We, we brought the county manager in at a time when things were off the rails last year with the individual we had here last year, and we put our trust in her. We, we paid her, I think, very well for her to do her job, and I just don't think we should come out and renegotiate the salary in public. I, I just don't approve it. But the, but the motion's been made with all due respect. That's all I have to say on it.
Well, Brian, there's one other clarification. The council, before we had council, they still had divisions, they determined the salaries. There was like a salary board to make that determination, and we no longer have a salary board. So if we start doing this, we're getting into a dangerous place where county council will be setting salaries for all positions.
Yeah, if, if I could, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
And I, I, I get past practice. I understand the home rule for government and the former commissioner of government, but again, the principle here is that the council holds the purse strings. So I disagree with my colleague that it's not council's purse, because it is. And it, it, it seems very adversarial, and I, I think I made a mistake, and I should have, I should have talked to you beforehand about this. And I want to support your team, because I really like Ms. Pecora very much. However, the principle is this body holds the purse strings, and we're trying to rein in the costs, just like everywhere. And to take it back to the taxpayers out there, everybody's having a hard time, and it's just very difficult. I understand you want to run it like a business. Some days, you don't want to run it like a business. The thing is, we're, we're accountable to the public, and the public is asking, you know, where's, where's my so-and-so raised to, to a certain extent? So I, my motion still stands, but I'm, I'm willing to dialogue about it. And again, not, not negotiating, that's not what I'm doing here. We're looking at, at holding on to the right role of this council.
I would also like to make a comment concerning the, the taxpayer dollars that are going into this decision. I'm concerned, one, about, yes, the qualifications. Jen is doing amazing work and working with Romilda to make sure that operations is, is being organized and handled. And I do have the utmost faith in, in Jen, but I'm concerned about the money we will be spending, the taxpayer dollars we will be spending to reassure that engineers are checking and making sure the work that's being done is up to par and up to standard, as well as us losing revenue for spending, you know, spending all of that money. That's a major concern for me. So I don't know, moving forward, the decisions that will be made here in the next couple of minutes, but I'd like that to be something that's taken into consideration.
If I may-
Go ahead, Ms. Crocomo.
If I may, when I interviewed for this position, and I believe when I had the public interviews for this position, I was steadfast in my commitment to make sure that the county has a professional staff and that the county not use an increase in taxes as a default, because that's, that's not the way to run a government.
All right.
No, I, I just wanted to, I wanted to make sure that their discussion was over.
Mr. LaScavage?
So, so I, and part of that is for me to assemble the staff that believes and is committed to that as well. And part of that is to streamline our expenses. And I will tell you here today that I have worked with Ms. Pecora since I appointed her as the acting division head of operations, and she's already organized that division. It's a very complicated division. We have over 120 miles of roads. We have a multitude of buildings that are old and need a lot of work, and she has the organizational and management skills to streamline that. And I will say to you today that the investment in the salary that I offered, Ms. Pecora, will show savings in the county. And we are going to control the work that our engineers do and streamline the monies that are going out to engineering firms and vendors that we're basically able to do whatever they wanted. And we need that leadership, and Ms. Pecora offers that leadership. And I mark my words, when we come back with the budget, at the end of the year, we will show you the savings that will be generated in operations when we streamline that. And that salary will be, you're going to say to me, she was worth every single penny.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hold me to it.
Mr. Sabatino?
Mr. Chair, I move to table this to get further information and answer Councilman Haas's concerns about the budget and the salary.
Okay. We have a motion and a second that is for the amendment. Can we rescind those motions and then motion to table the, motion to table the resolution? Would you be willing to rescind those so we can have a motion to table for now? Okay.
I'll rescind my second and-
Okay.
And detain the motion to table.
All right. Okay. So there's a motion to table. Is there a second?
I'll sit here.
All right. There's a motion and a second to table the resolution hiring the division head of operational services. Roll call, please, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Perry?
No.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
No.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
No.
Ms. McDermott?
No.
Mr. Lombardo?
No.
You have five and five. It fails.
The motion to table fails?
Yes.
Okay. All right. So we have a motion and a second for the original resolution at 110,000 dollars a year. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Sabatino?
I'm forced to agree with Councilman Haas and vote no.
Can I make a second? Can I make a second part, Mr. Chair? Ask my speaker?
Go ahead, Mr. Haas.
So if, if it's about streamlining the division head salaries, again, this is not, this is not negotiating in public, and they have accepted we have to go this route, but again, Mr. Jaeger's made 105,000 dollars. This division head is going to be made 5,000 dollars more. It's, it's, it's depending on the dollar, the rate scheme, things like that. But again, if this is what we're doing, we're managing, we're being consistently, we're having consistent standards here, and we're also aligned by the, the council sanctioned budget. It should be, following that logic, it should be 105,000 dollars. And make a motion to make the salary 105,000 dollars to keep the salary streamlined.
All right. There's a motion for 105,000 dollars as an amendment. Is there a second? All right. Motion fails for lack of a second. All right. There's a first and a second on the original resolution. Once again, roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Sabatino?
I'm forced to agree with Councilman Haas on this and vote no.
Ms. Smith? I think Jenny Pecora has done a great job, but I agree, and it is our responsibility, and I agree. No.
Ms. Stevenson?
No.
Mr. Thornton?
As one who voted against the confirmation of Ms. Pecora when she came to the county early last year, I changed my opinion 180 degrees on her after watching the job she's done recently, and I vote yes.
Mr. Haas?
Well, I can tell she's doing a great job. That's our point here. We have to vote no.
Ms. Krishnowski?
No.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
And Mr. Lombardo?
A resounding yes.
It's five to five, so the resolution does not pass.
All right. Thank you. Number six. Motion regarding appointing a council member to the opioid committee. All open nominations with a, is there a motion to open nominations?
Motion.
Second. Thornton.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nominations are open.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Lombardo for the opioid committee.
There's nomination for Mr. Lombardo. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Any other nominations?
I nominate Brittany Stevenson.
Second.
All right. Okay. All right. There are two nominees. Oh, motion to close nominations, sorry. Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Nominations are closed. All right. There are two nominees, so I guess we'll go around the room, and you will state your preference of nominee.
Ms. Smith?
A resounding Brittany Stevenson.
Ms. Stevenson?
Brittany Stevenson.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Lombardo.
Mr. Haas?
Mr. Lombardo.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Brittany Stevenson.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
And Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right. Number nine. Motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member to complete another unexpired term as county commissioners association of Pennsylvania voting delegate.
Motion to open nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are open.
And I move to appoint Mr. Harry Haas.
Second? Any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
I move to appoint Patty Krishnowski.
Second.
All right. A motion and a second?
Motion.
Okay. All right. So there's, any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Nominations are closed. Okay. There are two candidates, so as we go around, please state your preference.
Mr. Haas?
Harry Haas.
This was just a formality, as I said, just to, at the last meeting, to be fair.
Oh, six, four, I'm sorry about that.
About it. Okay, thank you. All right, motion to adopt the resolution urging the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission to deny the rate increase proposed by the Pennsylvania American Water Company.
Second.
Who was, who was the first?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Ms. Stevenson?
To the PUC rate increase?
No. Mr. Thornton?
For the record, this is a motion to deny the rate increase proposed.
Would you like to change your?
You can change your.
Okay, all right.
I, I vote yes to deny.
So this is a resolution urging the PUC to deny it. We're not denying it.
That's correct.
Ms. Stevenson, you've changed to yes. Mr. Thornton was yes.
Correct.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
And Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous. I'm sorry, Ms. Smith?
I vote yes.
Unanimous. I'm so sorry.
All right, no problem. All right. Motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member to complete an unexpired term as a County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania voting delegate.
I'd like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Sabatino.
Second.
All right.
We need, no should open first before that.
Oh, all right, is there a motion to open nominations?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Nominations are open.
I'd like to appoint, or, yeah, I'd like to appoint Mr. Sabatino.
All right, motion and a second. Any other nominations? Motion to close nominations?
So move.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. All right, there is one person, so we will just need to vote the resolution, right? Okay, all right.
We need a first and a second, huh?
We need a first and a second for the resolution to appoint Mr. Sabatino.
So move.
Second.
Um, okay, Ms. Krishnowski.
Thank you.
Okay, roll call.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, number nine, motion to adopt the resolution appointing a county council member to complete another unexpired term as County Commissioners Association of Pennsylvania voting delegate.
Motion to open nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are open.
And I move to appoint Mr. Harry Haas.
Second. Uh, any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
I move to appoint Patty Krishnowski.
Second.
All right, a motion and a second?
Motion.
Okay, all right, so there's, any other nominations?
Motion to close nominations.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, nominations are closed. Okay, there are two candidates, so as we go around, please state your preference.
Mr. Haas?
Harry Haas.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Krishnowski.
Mr. LaScavage?
Mr. Haas.
Ms. McDermott?
Mr. Haas.
Mr. Perry?
Mr. Haas.
Mr. Sabatino?
Krishnowski.
Ms. Smith?
Krishnowski.
Ms. Stevenson?
Krishnowski.
Mr. Thornton?
Mr. Haas.
Mr. Lombardo?
Mr. Haas.
Six for Mr. Haas, four for Ms. Krishnowski, Mr. Haas would be the candidate.
All right, thank you. We'll now have a motion to adopt the resolution appointing Mr. Haas. Motion, is there a second? Roll call.
Ms. Krishnowski?
Yes.
Mr. LaScavage?
Yes.
Ms. McDermott?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Sabatino?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Ms. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Thornton?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And Mr. Lombardo?
Yes.
Unanimous.
All right, we'll now have public comment on non-agenda items. We have a couple of slips up here. First, we have.
Thank you, everybody.
First, we have Denise Williams.
Thank you, county council members, public. Denise Williams, Kingston Township, I'm speaking as a citizen. I have concerns about the ordinance in the upcoming work session. The county charter, section 2.11, ordinance requirements, state's ordinance should be limited to one subject, clearly expressed in the title, and this ordinance has three distinct subjects noted in its title. Each of the issues would require much unpacking, discussion, and deliberation separately and publicly. I personally have concerns about several aspects of each of the three separate issues in this ordinance. Section A, increasing protection of election workers, doesn't specifically state what, if anything, would be increased. It appears to reiterate what is already law, and there are laws in place against intimidation, harassment, and assault of election workers. While it is certainly important to bring more awareness to the public on this, a resolution may be the appropriate procedure here. Section B, protection of election worker information, I'm concerned that imminent and serious threats to election workers due to dissemination of their personal information is best handled by the DA's office and not ordnanced by county council to be addressed by a city administrator as worded in the ordinance. Lastly, section C, one and two are already laws in place. For three and four, I am of the understanding that key card access and video monitoring of voting equipment and preservation of voting records is in place. Also, there are two areas that appear to conflict with procedures and roles already defined by the bureau leadership and board of elections. The, also, the section on key card access, these are the two areas that I'm just, I'm talking about, where it says the designated election official shall, shall be the director of elections unless otherwise designated by the Luzern County Board of Elections. The board of elections cannot and does not define or provide bureau employee job descriptions, and that's the role of the administration. Under video monitoring, C, the designated election official is not required to follow requirements of this section when voting equipment components are deployed for use or stored at a voting site or polling center. This goes against the resolution that the board and the bureau leadership passed together that's on the website, and it is a resolution put in place that video monitoring will take place on all ballot drop boxes once they are deployed. So this seems to be in conflict and kind of overrides that, and I would be concerned because I think the citizens of this county like that the ballot drop boxes are video monitored while they're away. Again, addressing these sections, I believe, would require amendments.
All right, thank you, Ms. Williams.
To the administrative code as well.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Fitzgerald?
Uh, yeah, I'd like to talk about elections. We've always had, you know, we've, we've had a bunch of debacles, and lately, when I've been down to the election bureau, I have received the best service in the world from Erin Harvey and the rest of the staff, and they've been very, very well. I'm really disheartened that Erin resigned, from what I heard, I think she's, I was, you know, I've heard rumors that she's been pushed out. There's other, two other opening spots that two people left. We probably have the most important election in my lifetime coming up, and I think we're understaffed at the election bureau. I think we need to get all hands on deck. I had an, an event this week, and everybody's concerned. Everybody's concerned. The last election, only three out of ten voters that, that are registered, Democrat and Republican, came out and vote. So you, we might say, hey, we won an election, we got three out of ten people. That means seven out of ten have no faith either in the system, or the candidates, or both, and that's sad. We need to get, inspire people to let them know their vote counts. And right now, most people don't have faith in our system, and by losing, uh, you know, the main person, like, I think it's five in four years that, that department heads for, for our election bureau head, is kind of bad. And at the event, there was over two, about 250 people there, at least 40 people came, and they don't think their vote counts, and they think that there's going to be another debacle. And I'm not lying, and that's sad. We should have faith in our system, and honestly, if we don't have a good election integrity, then what are we? We, we're nothing. I mean, it's, it's, it's a banana republic, and if, if we can fix an election, or if election doesn't go right, we have chaos, and, and that's not cool. So I really hope, I'm, I'm just sad, and I'm worried, and, and I'm not the only one. So I think that we can give raises, we could do everything, but in the end, we have the most important election in our lifetime, and I pray to God Luzern County comes through with flying colors, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Mr. Griffin? Oh, do you, I'm sorry, did you have something?
No.
I apologize. Okay. All right, um, there's one hand up on the Zoom, I believe it's Mr. Raybo.
Wait, can I say what? And by, and by the way, Emily has always, and she's a professional, I left her name out, she's also been very supportive.
Okay.
And I wanted to let you know that she is, is a rock star, just like Erin was.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fitzgerald. Nope, you're okay. Mr. Raybo?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mark Raybo from Hazleton speaking. Uh, I have one statement and two questions. One, the statement is regarding the Nanaco Bridge information meeting yesterday, I would like to expound on what was said by Mr. Thornton yesterday, the vice chair, about the bridge, the history, as far as who, you know, of course, Senator Decheck deserves credit for the, uh, putting the funding, flipping it into the state budget in 2021, uh, for the funding for the LSA infrastructure fund. However, he flipped it in without any process whatsoever. So I just want to make that abundantly clear, and it was the redevelopment authority and the staff and bond council, Stevens and Lee, who did most of the legwork in putting that process together. So I would hope that the vice chair and members of council could acknowledge that for the record. Uh, I understand that our, that the state delegation that represents the Nanaco area can't bring themselves to acknowledge that, but I think that it should be council that acknowledges that, as well as, uh, coming to terms with what happens with the other municipalities on the project list that were waiting decades for their county roads to be fixed. I think that would be very discriminatory for council not to consider the roads, the county roads that the municipalities have been waiting so long and patiently for. So I just would like to make that clear, Mr. Chairman, to you and the rest of council, and I know the manager understands, uh, the, the gravity of not, uh, adher, not adhering to the original project list and also taking into consideration those municipalities that have been waiting for those county roads. The two questions I have regarding City Hall for Hazleton for the county offices is, one, the parking consideration for handicapped and disabled people, and two, the instructions for the Hispanic community, because they have no idea where to go for those services, uh, the city services that have been moved and the county services that have come in. So I hope the manager, uh, and Mr. Chair, you can work with, uh, the manager and the division heads on, uh, on, uh, helping sort through those with the Hazleton City Mayor and the Hazleton City Administration. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Raybo. Ms. Crocomo, do you have something on, on any of that, the last part of what he said?
Uh, yes, we will be making announcements and making arrangements for the residents of Hazleton who are Spanish-speaking, so that they know where, where to go and what services are available. There will be handicap parking, uh, at, at City Hall. There is handicap parking at City Hall, and we'll make sure that there's sufficient parking.
Thank you, Ms. Crocomo. Mr. Thornton wants to clarify what he said last night.
Yeah, I'd like to thank Mr. Raybo for clarification there. He's correct. I did thank Senator, former Senator Decheck for the yeoman's work he did at the state level in securing, uh, this effort for the LSA money to come to this county for the next 25 years. Um, I, was this an oversight? I should have mentioned the redevelopment authority of the county did enormous amount of work on the project, and, uh, Mr. Raybo is, sits on that authority, and I thank him for all the work he did, as long, as well as the redevelopment authority. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Uh, we have Ms. Co-Chair?
Yes. This is about agenda item number three for the county manager and number five for council relating to elections. And rather than continue offering election insecurity through electronic voting equipment, we would hope the county manager would instead be directing a less costly and more secure path to voting by using paper ballots. Regarding the ordinance, we find that to be completely unnecessary. Uh, it circumvents the real issues. As stated, there are already existing laws that already protect anyone in most of those areas, but there is nothing in the ordinance to prevent information being manipulated the web. And of course, how would you prove, how would you even prove that? Instead, we're asking you to please focus on eliminating the problems already known that electronic voting equipment causes and work toward returning to paper ballots that can be tracked and not manipulated. Further, there's absolutely no wording, and this is critical, to mandate that the video security surveillance records be reviewed for integrity. To pay for surveillance equipment when no one is completely reviewing it is unconscionable at best and completely erodes voter trust. To retain these recordings for only 25 months after an election is not reasonable when our DA has already delayed election fraud investigations for more than that time period, and the county has repeatedly stalled public RTKs to view surveillance footage. Quite frankly, this ordinance seems to be nothing more than allowing incapable public servants to hide from public scrutiny and to hinder the public's right to observe and challenge elections. Instead, please address the real issues which are guaranteeing secure elections for each and every voter in Luzern County. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Co-Chair. Anybody else for public comment that's in the room? Mr. Granteed?
Joe Granteed, Plains. One thing I'd like to say is we have cameras around the drop boxes, but we don't have any, any, uh, way to have people show their faces to those cameras. People are allowed to walk up to them with one, two, three masks on, and I think that that's a mistake, and there should be some kind of a, an act that leaves people while they're dropping their, their ballots into the drop box to show their face. There, I don't think there's any danger of catching any diseases or anything like that, and it's the right thing to do for all the citizens who vote. Uh, the other thing is, I just want to reiterate a lot, a lot of what she, last person just said, I haven't heard of any proof of threats. Um, I sat in a courtroom one day when it was being adjudicated, and they had some testimony, but nothing was found to have been, uh, an actual threat to anybody who worked moving equipment around in the election bureau or in the election board. So, um, you know, to put protections in for people who are not threatened seems just like a, a way to keep the citizens in the dark about the actual problems that we have with elections when people want to contest them. It shields the people who are responsible from, um, they get a get out of jail card for any evidence of requested FOIA or write to knows, uh, because they can always use that excuse that we can't show anybody's faces, we can't tell you who they are, you know, and, and that's part of what's going on with the last election with the paper. If they had those protections in right now, they wouldn't have to appeal the court case for the third time. They could, they could have been, uh, found, uh, they would have been thrown out just because those protections were in place, and right now, the citizens have a chance to actually see what happened with, with the paper problems we had, and it's despicable that, you know, our tax money is going toward, you know, keeping it from us. And like I said before, I want to throw my support for Erin Harvey, and I hope Erin Harvey and the last three or four people that were in her, her spot come forward and talk about the issues that they had as they were leaving.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment?
Good evening, council. For those that don't know me, I'm Lucy Morgan. I'm a longtime employee here, 35 years for the county. Right now, I'm the interim director of emergency services, which was newly formed, and that are, that is the offices of 911 and EMA. I wanted to give you all an open invitation to please come down to 911, some council members already have. We'll give you a tour, let you know what goes on day in, day out. We do have a staff shortage, and we, right now, in this class, we're interviewing 20 people. We have 10 commitments to start training, so we've been making strides. I will tell you that morale was at an all-time low, and I really, and EMA, please come up, see all the equipment we have. Now that we're merged, we're, we're working more cohesively, but what we need is a strong leader. Please, 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 consider the employees in these departments. EMA and 911 should be public safety, we shouldn't even really be in operations, but what Ms. Picora has done since she's been here, just today we had a phone outage. People could call in, but we couldn't call them back. As soon as I call, she's on the phone. Ms. Crocomo, Mr. Skeen, we have a great team right now. When I go in there tomorrow, I, my phone's already blowing up. The morale, this is a hit to us in both departments, and I'm sure other departments. Please, 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 for us, call me. Ms. Crocomo has my phone number. I could tell you anything you want to know. Email me, I'd be happy to answer. But please, come down, see what we do. We also have a 402 class we'd like to offer, and we're working with Ms. Crocomo on that. Um, it's for elected officials, and you learn a lot more in that, too. Not saying that you don't know, but not a lot of people know about EMA or 911, and if a disaster strikes, and we're very disaster prone in this county, it helps, and this way, you guys help us in return by being more knowledgeable. So thank you for your time, and please consider the employees in these departments. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy, and thank you so much for your hard work at the 911 Center. As somebody who, you know, has to interact with those employees every single day in my professional work, I certainly appreciate it, my coworkers appreciate it, and I know we on council appreciate what you've done as well, so thank you.
And, and I want to add, John, I've been up there a couple of times, and they serve delicious food, great lunches.
That is true, that is true. Anybody else for public comment? Motion to adjourn, oh, go ahead, ma'am.
Desiree Edwards, Swyersville. I just don't see why someone would resign two months before the election. I didn't hear anything about Erin Harvey, a problem with her or anything, and for the past four elections, there's been a problem in Luzern County, and it seems like nothing gets fixed. We're all taking bets on what's going to happen this year in our election. So something's going on inside there, and I don't know. Do you guys oversee the election bureau?
No, ma'am.
No.
No, we don't, we don't oversee each individual department. Um, that's up to the division heads, the department heads, and obviously, the manager is ultimately the overseer of everything that goes on day to day. Um, we're sometimes apprised of situations, depending on what they are, but we normally don't get involved in personnel matters, particularly something like this, although it is high-profile, um, you know, we haven't been notified of anything, and as far as we're, you know, under the understanding, whatever she said publicly is, you know, accurate.
Well, we'll see what goes on this election.
Thank you. Oh, and the microphones are great.
Thank you. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
Yes, well, I have a comment.
Oh, oh, okay, Ms. Jordan, go ahead.
Okay, um, thank you for letting me speak. Deborah Jordan, Sugarloaf Township.
Thank you.
I would like to just quickly make a comment on work session poll worker resolution. When I look into things, I like to look at both sides before I jump to a conclusion, and I feel that, and so I've been researching the push for legislation to protect poll workers from harassment, and this is very good on the surface, but, you know, the more I delve into it, the more I began to uncover some lengthy, like, restraints that were included in legislation and resolutions and ordinances that I saw examples from other counties. Some of the restraints border on the infringement of free speech and the right to observe and challenge the electoral process. challenge the electoral process. So, even though there is a lot of good proposed in your resolution, I just wanted to bring to the forefront, just to be aware, maybe have some more discussion, that something disconcerting isn't inadvertently being slipped into the resolution. We need to know what is really being proposed, you know, that we're not leaning, let's say, heavy into protecting one right while taking away from another. So, and just one other thing I saw that relates to this is legislation and resolutions being put into place, not only for the poll workers, but for the observers, the whistleblowers, and the everyday citizen, who, those who witnessed firsthand fraudulent practices being perpetrated at the polls. These people also face threats while trying to uphold their First Amendment rights while, you know, vocalizing their own concerns when they saw something go wrong or they have something that might go against the legality when they saw something firsthand of an election. That's all I say, just look into this resolution is before just blindly passing it. I thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Anybody else? Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned. It is 7:09. We will restart at 7:15 if that's okay with everybody? All right.
Oh, I knew you were coming.
Do you have any comments?
I was there this morning, six o'clock, hanging out with Ramon.
I saw you both, I saw Jim chewing, I'm like, oh, dang it.
I swear to God.
I'm sure we'll be talking soon.
I'm sure.
I understand.
For as many people as you speak to, I hear for just as many.
There'll be, you know what? There'll be so much, everything just goes out.
I just do my thing.
They put somebody, they put over us, I'm not saying they kept running him in.
How are you, Lucy?
You need her. Desperate.
You're preaching to the choir.
My phone is blowing up. They're all upset.
And I can't do anything to them.
Across the hall, you need to have a cup of coffee or something.
Excuse me, sorry.
It's not, you know, it's usually positive.
You know, speak positively about their superiority, because we certainly could use that.
Thank you.
You're so sweet.
I'm literally not staying if they put an idiot over me.
I'm sorry.
You have enough time to retire, too.
I probably might before they put me down there.
Don't scare John.
Okay, I'll be.
I'm not staying if they put an idiot over me.
I'm not taking that job.
So, they can have a 3.5, 4, 4, 4?
I love you.
I'll figure it out.
I'll have to look, I think so.
I don't know, but he will just do it next week.
I hope they agree with me.
Yeah, he's only not to worry about it.
Well, evidently.
He had a mandate, this is the first meeting he's ever...
He's never, yeah, he's never missed a meeting, and of course, it's a meeting that he's really needed. I didn't think we were going to.
It's okay.
Well, you can't take this, you must stabilize.
I know, I know, but, you know, still.
But it puts us behind.
I'm still...
I have to, seriously.
I'll do, I'm gonna put in a ticket later, so I have to schedule the next week and the next week.
Everything's held up on that. I can't work on a building and anything before I get appointed, so.
That's up to you. That's up to you.
You can't go anywhere.
It's okay.
I paid my dues in 35 years, seriously. I don't want idiocracy, I just...
I don't think that you have to worry too much, it's just...
Our whole department is 100% funded. So, there's savings right there. The county doesn't pay one penny.
That's another thing that I really wish that we can get some of this stuff across to these newer council members, that a lot of these departments, a lot of the stuff, especially related to what you do, is all 100% funded by, not by the general. So, you know, even a lot of the stuff in elections, like you guys have the Election Integrity Grant, which is, you know, a huge help. Huge help, so, you know, just...
I would never.
I love you, too.
Even though she took my job.
No chance to voluntarily, I don't steal her. Jen's just more...
No, she had enough of me.
She has more experience in this.
She ran away screaming.
She wasn't the EMA coordinator.
Hi. Okay, how about you?
Fantastic.
How's it going?
Hey, Chris.
How you doing?
All right, man.
So, just saying. I just heard, I couldn't make anything happen. Just saying. Thank you.
All right. Council members, we're going to get restarted with the work session here. Okay. Yep, yep, all right. All right, I'd like to call the work session to order. We already had a pledge of allegiance. Roll call, Ms. Lawrence.
Mr. Hawes?
Here.
Ms. Krasnowski?
Here.
Mr. LaScavage?
Here.
Mr. Lombardo?
Here.
Ms. McDermott?
Present.
Mr. Perry?
Here.
Mr. Sabatino?
Here.
Ms. Smith?
Here.
Ms. Stevenson?
Here.
Mr. Thornton?
Here.
Mr. Wilovich is absent. You have 10 of 11?
All right, thank you. Are there any additions or deletions from the work session agenda?
I'd like to move...
Mr. Sabatino, did you have something?
Yeah, I'd like to motion to remove the ordinance, the Poll Worker Protection Ordinance.
That's number five?
Item number five?
All right, there's a motion to remove number five, and there's a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number five is removed. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda minus number five?
Show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, number five is removed. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda minus number five?
Show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted, minus number five. All right, number one, receive and discuss division reports for January 2024.
Good evening, Council. Lucy Morgan kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I'm very proud that we have 20 applicants in the class at 911. That is due in part to Lucy's leadership there and Jim Pecora's leadership over at 911 and EMA. That's the largest class that we've had in years. So, I want to thank both of them for the work that they're doing, and we're going to continue to move forward. Any questions about the report? You can ask me now. I'm always open to emails and phone calls. I know I meet with most of the county council members at least once every two weeks. There are some who have not taken advantage of that, but of course, I'm always open to that, and I look forward to talking with each one of you. I do want to add a direct message I received from somebody on Facebook who has a business in Exeter. Romilda, I want to personally thank you for the Luzerne County Small Business Grant. It's dice to know that both you and the county council care about the smaller businesses. I was in the process of planning some facade upgrades. It may interest you and the council to know every dollar is going back into the community. Again, thank you for your help. And to my friend who did text that, county council made those decisions about earmarking money for small businesses. Everyone knows that I'm a proponent of bringing development and higher-paying jobs into Luzerne County. But when all is said and done, it's our small businesses that are our backbone. And the fact that we have an individual who is very grateful for the amount of money that they're getting from the ARPA money, I want to share that with council and applaud council for their decision-making.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crocamo, and we've heard many stories like that through the Small Business Grant, just through the ARPA funds in general. So, we certainly appreciate the comments, and thank you. All right, are there any questions? All right, number two, discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement with No Ink LLC for software license and maintenance fees related to the recently purchased electronic poll books.
Emily Cook?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. The Bureau of Elections would like to, as you can see, move forward with a two- to three-year maintenance contract for our new electronic poll books. This would be funded through the Election Integrity Grant, which is an annual grant. The $33,000 annual software and maintenance agreement would be covered as a qualifying expense, and that is what we intend to use.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Hawes.
Hi, Ms. Cochran, welcome to council. Can you tell me, how much would it cost to just print out our poll books that we've traditionally done here in Luzerne County? What's the cost of something like that?
I'm not sure of the exact cost election to election. We have done it in the past, but I can get you those numbers. I'll send it to council tomorrow.
Because didn't we do that the last cycle, not in 2023, 2022? Will you go back to the traditional poll books?
Over the last several years, we've done sort of a combination between the electronic poll books that we had previously. Due to some issues with the longevity of those poll books, we had to kind of muddle our way through, which is why we went out for bid for the new electronic poll books, which have already been purchased. This contract would just be to extend a maintenance agreement into the year two and three.
Oh, the books have already been purchased?
Yes. This is just for the maintenance for years, for second and third year. That was not in the initial agreement.
Oh, well, that changes the whole discussion then, I guess, right? We already have them. Okay. Because I just remember in my former time on council, we bought poll books, too, for a similar cost, and they were out the door in like three years. And I just wonder, like, are we getting the value for what we're paying? That's my principal question here, and the point is kind of moot.
So, we did, yep, the electronic poll books that we did use previously.
Oh.
The electronic poll books that we have used previously, we had for five years, and they reached the end of their expected shelf life, as all technology does. It is basic, the previous poll books that we had were basically a tablet that reached the end of their shelf life. We're moving forward with the purchase of the new ones, covered under the Election Integrity Grant. And so, now we're moving, looking to move forward with the software and maintenance agreements as well.
I mean, it's a great business model that every five years, you get a half a million dollars into your business. I mean, I want to be that when I grow up. But just the frustrating thing about this process, do we have backups for paper poll books? Do we have that just in case? We have some kind of cyber contingency, anything like that?
We do provide a paper backup through various, I can send you a detailed report of what we use as well.
Okay. So, and I'm just wondering if we're already printing them out, but we're also, we're doing a both end. I mean, how can we really maybe improve that savings on that area?
We don't print full, we have not printed full additional paper poll books to the electronic ones, only for the elections that we had to sort of mitigate our issues with the previous vendors' electronic poll books.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
And Emily, if I can just ask you a question, the paper poll books, are they current on the day of election, or is there an end date on their being up to date?
Right, so the paper poll books would be a little bit further out of date because obviously, we need to pull voter files prior to printing, which takes several days to print everything and then have them delivered. Electronic poll books can be up to date. As of the ones that we purchased, we pulled the file the day after the mail-in ballot deadline, so that all voters that have mail-in ballots...
Opposed? All right, number five is removed. All right, is there a motion to adopt the agenda minus number five?
Show move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the agenda is adopted, minus number five. All right, number one, receive and discuss division reports for January 2024.
Good evening, council. Lucy Morgan kind of stole my thunder a little bit. I'm very proud that we have 20 applicants in the class at 911. That is due in part to Lucy's leadership there and Jim Pacora's leadership over at 911 and EMA. That's the largest class that we've had in years. So, so I want to thank both of them for the work that they're doing and we're gonna continue to move forward. Any questions about the report, you can ask me now. I'm always open to emails and phone calls. I know I meet with most of the county council members at least once every two weeks. There are some who have not taken advantage of that, but of course, I'm always open to that and I look forward to talking with each one of you. I do want to add a direct message I received from somebody on Facebook who has a business in Exeter. "Rumelda, I want to personally thank you for the Luzern County Small Business Grant. It's dice to know that both you and the county council care about the smaller businesses. I was in the process of planning some facade upgrades. It may interest you and the council to know every dollar is going back into the community. Again, thank you for your help." And to my friend who did text that, county council made those decisions about earmarking money for small businesses. Everyone knows that I'm a proponent of bringing development and higher paying jobs into Luzern County. But when all is said and done, it's our small businesses that are our backbone. And the fact that we have an individual who is very grateful for the amount of money that they're getting from the ARPA money, I want to share that with council and applaud council for their decision making.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crocamo, and we've heard many stories like that through the small business grant, just through the ARPA funds in general. So we certainly appreciate the comments and thank you. All right, are there any questions? All right, number two, discussion regarding the resolution authorizing the county manager to execute an agreement with No Ink LLC for software license and maintenance fees related to the recently purchased electronic poll books.
Emily Cook?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. The Bureau of Elections would like to, as you can see, move forward with a two to three year maintenance contract for our new electronic poll books. This would be funded through the Election Integrity Grant, which is an annual grant. The 33,000 annual software and maintenance agreement would be covered as a qualifying expense, and that is what we intend to use.
Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Hawes.
Hi, Ms. Cook, welcome to council. Can you tell me how much would it cost to just print out our poll books that we've traditionally done here in Luzern County? What's the cost of something like that?
I'm not sure of the exact cost election to election. We have done it in the past, but I can get you those numbers.
Yeah.
I'll send it to council tomorrow.
Because didn't we do that the last cycle, not in 2023, 2022? Will you go back to the traditional poll books?
Over the last several years, we've done sort of a combination between the electronic poll books that we had previously.
Yeah.
Due to some issues with the longevity of those poll books, we had to kind of muddle our way through, which is why we went out for bid for the new electronic poll books, which have already been purchased.
Yeah.
This contract would just be to extend a maintenance agreement into the year two and three.
Oh, the books have already been purchased?
Yes. This is just for the maintenance for years, for second and third year. That was not in the initial agreement.
Oh, well, that changes the whole discussion then, I guess, right? We've already have them. Okay. Because I just remember in my former time on council, we bought poll books too for a similar cost and they were out the door in like three years. And I just wonder, like, are we getting the value for what we're paying? That's my principal question here and.
So we did.
The point is kind of moved.
Yep, the electronic poll books that we did use previously.
Oh.
The electronic poll books that we have used previously, we had for five years and they reached the end of their expected shelf life, as all technology does. It is basic, the previous poll books that we had were basically a tablet that reached the end of their shelf life. Forward with the purchase of the new ones covered under the Election Integrity Grant. And so now we're moving, looking to move forward with the software and maintenance agreements as well.
I mean, it's a great business model that every five years you get a half a million dollars into your business. I mean, I want to be that when I grow up. But just the frustrating thing about this process, do we have backups for paper poll books? Do we have that just in case we have some kind of cyber contingency, anything like that?
We do provide a paper backup through various, I can send you a detailed report.
Yeah, okay.
Of what we use as well.
Okay. So, and I'm just wondering if we're already printing them out, but we're also, we're doing a both end. I mean, how can we really maybe improve that savings on that area?
We don't print full, we have not printed full additional paper poll books to the electronic ones, only for the elections that we had to sort of mitigate our issues with the previous vendors' electronic poll books.
Yeah, okay, very good. Thank you.
And Emily, if I can just ask you a question, the paper poll books, are they current on the day of election or is there an end date on their being up to date?
Right, so the paper poll books would be a little bit further out of date because obviously we need to pull voter files prior to printing, which takes several days to print everything and then have them delivered. Electronic poll books can be up to date as of the ones that we purchased. We pull the file the day after the mail-in ballot deadline so that all voters that have mail-in ballots are accounted for within the poll books.
Any other questions? Go ahead, Ms. Smith.
Hi, Ms. Cook. We're, these are very, very sensitive and we can turn the gain down on them, I think. I apologize. We're coming into an election where we're gonna have a special election. Are the poll books, does this maintenance contract cover the update that we need for the poll books to add the independent voters so that they can vote on the county?
So those would have been covered. Sorry, those would have been covered under year one because we're just entering into the contract with No Ink. This is for into 2025, 2026.
So that's done?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Sabatino, go ahead.
I have a question about the financing. Are we sure that the Election Integrity Grant covers this, the maintenance? Because there's a white paper issued by the state and one of the questions is, does secure preparation, transportation, storage and management of voting apparatuses, tabulation equipment and required polling place materials in the list of eligible uses include contracted vendor support costs? And it does say yes, but only if those costs are incurred during preparation, storage and management phases. For example, payments made to local trucking company to facilitate the delivery of election equipment and supplies to polling places are eligible, but using funding to pay periodic maintenance fees on standard ongoing support contracts may not be eligible.
I believe that that is for one of the categories, this would be for a. There are several categories listed under there. Like I said, I can provide you the category we were going to use. I just don't have it at my fingertips.
No problem. And did you use the election consultant to, did you verify this through the election?
Yes, we've discussed all of this pretty extensively with our consultant.
Any other questions from council members?
I also believe that there were inquiries made by Michelle Sparich with regarding the Election Integrity Grant because in this cycle, she has been involved in that and there were many calls made to the Department of State verifying our application and verifying what our costs are.
Thank you. I know it's difficult to figure out what goes where and how and when. I just want to make sure we're doing the right thing and putting it in the right places.
I hear you, and Michelle Sparich is, she's the gold standard.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Cook.
Thank you.
All right. Number three, discussion regarding the resolution designating authorized signatories for execution of documents, notices, contracts and managements of projects through PennDOT's reimbursement agreement system.
Good evening, council. So the resolution for the system that we use for our state reporting, it's basically the project management system that we use for all of our infrastructure roadway projects in operations. They need an updated resolution stating who can sign for the reimbursement agreements to get the money from the state and someone who's authorized to go into the electronic management contract system. So we've updated the resolution since the operations department is restructuring in the area that manages this. It's listing the new positions, not individuals. So we just need your approval so that we could move forward to have access to the system and properly manage internal projects.
Any questions? All right, thank you very much. Number four, discussion regarding the resolution to lease office space at 40 North Church Street, Hazelton, from the city of Hazelton. Ms. Pacora?
You do this to me every time.
I know, I'm sorry.
It's okay. So this is coming back before council. Previously, a resolution was passed in November of 2023 for the lease of the space in Hazelton City Hall. Since then, the courts have pulled out of that space, so the amounts have changed. The square footage has changed, so we need to bring this back to you. The revised maps of the space that would be used was included in your agenda packets as well as the revision in the cost for the annual cost now being 46,335 annually, which would be split amongst the departments that will be sharing the space down in City Hall.
And just so council and the public are aware, the courts are committed to have central court in Hazelton. It's just we need to find a better space for them and they're beginning to do that search.
Ms. Smith?
Two things now.
Hmm.
What magistrates would that include? Just the two in Hazelton?
Four in the Southern District, in the, in this, sorry, in, I mean, back in New York, in the southern part of the county. There are four.
Who?
Well, it would be Zola Dixon.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
Judge Zola, Dixon, Ferris Webby and Daniel O'Donnell.
Oh, okay.
So they want to find, they want to relocate where Magistrate Zola was housed his chambers and have one court.
Have it on central court.
Mm-hmm. And probation will also be at central court.
So that's not included in this lease?
No, no, it was originally.
But not anymore.
But not anymore, and that's why we're coming back to get the amended lease passed.
Don't we already own property in Hazelton?
We do, we do, we do, but it's full. It's full, the Broad Street Exchange Building is full.
That's exactly what I was gonna bring.
Right. Yes.
Exchange. Do we know how long those leases are for? I mean.
Yes, and they're varied, and this lease is for two years.
Yes.
Obviously, we're going to monitor the situation and we will see after two years whether we want to stay in City Hall or use the Broad Street Exchange.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number five, which was number six, discussion regarding the resolution to abate delinquent Luzern County taxes for the property located at 90 Plank Street in Jenkins Township. I'm the one that actually brought this to council, so I can, I mean, I can certainly speak on it unless somebody else would like to.
I know that, Ms. Roselle, we did try to reach out to the representatives.
Do you want to, do you want to just speak on that maybe a little bit, Mary? I don't know, if you don't know much, that's okay. Okay. I could tell you the history of what I did.
Right, well, the history I have is from the phone call you made to me that someone was going to contact us, you know, and ask for the abatement, but I never received a phone call from anyone at Jenkins.
Okay, all right, well, it just, I received a phone call from one of the supervisors in Jenkins Township that said they were interested in purchasing a property that's a very dilapidated, terrible, awful building on Plank Street in Jenkins Township, and they had had the taxes forgiven by the school district and obviously by themselves in order to purchase the property, and they were looking for the county to forgive taxes as well. So we have to approve all of those tax abatements, so it just has to come to us. And, I mean, I can reach out to them again and just see if they can maybe come to the next meeting. I was under the impression they would be here or that they would have reached out to you already. I've spoken to their solicitor like six times about this and they were, you know, very persistent about getting this on an agenda and now they're not here, so I don't know what's going on.
I'm happy to reach out to, if you want to give me one of them specifically to reach out to, I'm happy to do that, too.
Sure, okay. Mr. LaScavage?
I'm in favor of this, but should they make a formal request?
Yeah, I agree, I, yeah, I was under the impression that that was all kind of happening, but evidently did not occur.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Years ago, when I was on the land bank authority up there in that Pittston area, Jenkins Township was part of the land bank whose sole purpose is to acquire dilapidated, rundown properties and rehabilitate them or knock them down and build nice, affordable housing. So I'm wondering, are they involved in this deal?
That's exactly what they're planning to do. They have to purchase the property and then, I guess, transfer it to the land bank.
Okay.
I'm not sure exactly how the process works with that, but I believe that's what they had told me is that they will purchase the property, they will demolish it, you know, at cost for them and then give it to the land bank for development. And if, I mean, those, some of those properties that the land bank develops are very beautiful and the other land banks as well.
And they were very successful, they've converted a lot of properties to beautiful properties. But like Mr. LaScavage said, the land bank should probably send a letter of request to council.
Okay.
To manager Crocamo, I would imagine.
We'll see if somebody from the county or myself, whoever, can reach out to the township and get them to do the formal request. All right.
So, I mean, we're not gonna move this forward to the voting session then, are we? We'll wait for their presentation.
Not immediately, oh, yeah, 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 not immediately.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Public comment, anybody in the audience? Anybody on the Zoom? Is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor? Opposed?
Nay.
All right, meeting is adjourned with one nay.
It's too early.